Does it ring a bell back there? Does it ring a bell or something?
Shh, here on camera.
Good evening. My name is Scott Neal and I'm the city manager here in Edina. This is not usually the face you see starting a city council meeting. Tonight, we have a small quirk in our council meeting agenda that I'll explain. We have the tradition of appointing an acting mayor at our first meeting of every business year, and we did not do that at our first meeting this year. The acting mayor is an important position as it serves, that person serves in place of the mayor when the mayor is out of town. And tonight, the mayor is out of town, and because we didn't appoint the acting mayor at the first meeting, we need to do that first thing tonight. So, from a council standpoint, in order to appoint the acting mayor, someone needs to make a motion, it needs to be seconded, there needs to be a vote. And currently, your acting mayor is Councilmember Brindle, and she's been in that role for eight years, I think, or more.
One.
Yeah. There's a motion by Mr. Staunton, Councilmember Staunton.
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Fisher. Is there any comment to the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Councilmember Brindle, you are the official acting mayor of the city, and you can call this meeting to order the right way.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we are going to call the Edina City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, to order. All right, and I'll ask for roll call. Clerk Ellison.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Acting Mayor, Brindle.
Here. Thank you, and those of you who wish to join us, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And approval of tonight's agenda, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes, additions, changes to the agenda that we have? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, super, thank you. And now, community comment. If there's anyone in the room who would like to come forward and make a comment, please do. You can use a side podium, unless you have something you'd like to put on the camera.
No, good. My name is Andy Brown. I'm a homeowner at 5512 Park Place in Edina, in the Minnehaha Woods area, in the northeast side of town. A couple of things I'd like to have addressed is, this council received input from paid consultants by the city regarding a third station in the, third fire station in the north and northeast side of town, and one of the recommendations from them was to do it immediately. And so, I'd kind of like to know where that stands, what we're doing about that. They said that if you find land, or if you've been notified of land, go buy it. So, I'd kind of like to know where we stand on that, is we have, my family has three houses in north northeast Edina. Two family members have heart conditions, one's a cancer survivor, one's retiring in place, and I'm going to make future decisions on what happens based on whether or not the services that we pay for and property taxes are actually going to be provided by the city of Edina. The second thing that I would like to bring up is, as a resident of, longtime resident of Minnehaha Woods, when we went through our street reconstruction, I personally paid for that upfront and in full, from what I was requested by the city to do. Part of that street reconstruction was actually lining or replacing the sewer line from your property line to the center line of the street. Now, it's my understanding of, of course, things changed from when that happened, back in '12, whenever it was, but it's my understanding that that might now actually have been illegal, and the city wasn't supposed to do that. That's about a $2,200 charge per house, and there's about 220 houses that were involved in that, so it's about a half a million dollars for our neighborhood. So, I would really like to hear some opinion on, you know, maybe that money should be reimbursed to that neighborhood for what happened regarding that sewer line, all the way to the center line that was mandated that we do, or we ended up having to be charged by the city. So, I'm sure my time is up, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. So, questions that are posed during community comment are taken, and the city manager will come back to the next meeting with an answer to those questions. And that's what we're going to do right now, is provide some answers to questions that were asked at our last council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Brindle, Acting Mayor Brindle. At our last council meeting on January 7th, we had two speakers, Andy Brown, Mr. Brown was one of them, and he talked to the council about the possibility of buying a currently available home parcel that is at the corner of 58th and France, and for potential fire station or E-line bus location. For us, it wouldn't be appropriate to buy land for a Metro Transit station. There's still a lot of process that needs to go through in terms of citing where stations are going to be, and that's something we're going to defer to them on, and when they get closer to making those decisions, we'll want to be involved in them too. But in terms of the fire station, I would disagree with the characterization that our study says, this is an emergency and you should go out and buy property right now. It's said to be, to be more strategic about it, to be thinking about it, to be opportunistic about where sites might be, and we're going to be all of those things. But one of the things we have to work through is, first of all, to get this project into our capital improvement plan, which is what we're going to be doing this year. And part of that process is also looking at sites. And we want to be strategic when we look at sites, because once you build, acquire a site and build a fire station on it, it's there for a very long time. So, we need to be careful about that, and we have time to be careful about it. Our care standards and response standards for northeast Edina, yeah, they're not as good as other parts of our city, but they still meet our standards. So, we are moving forward in that direction. The second speaker that we had was Frank Lorenz, and Mr. Lorenz discussed something that he's discussed with the council in a couple of previous appearances, and that is his concern about our decision to replace our fire department fleet. As you know, we made a decision this past year to adopt a different fleet management standard, and we're replacing our major pieces of equipment for fire trucks we've purchased, and we're taking delivery of them now. This year, it'll be four ambulances, and we'll take delivery of those new ambulances in 2020. We've worked through the financing plan for that, and actually, the plan does make a lot of sense when you look at it on a replacement basis, and in terms of the investment that we'll make in new equipment in our fire department going forward. It also gives us the advantage, because we have accelerated the replacement cycle from 20 to 10 years, to make sure that that equipment stays up to date with changes in firefighting services, in terms of how they're provided and the technology that we use to fight fires, which has changed significantly in the last 20 years. So, that's how I would respond to that question.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have a consent agenda. Anybody, I'm aware that two council members want to remove item D, 6D, from the consent agenda. Is there anything else? All right, then I'll take a motion to adopt the consent agenda in total with the exception of item D.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so item D, who wants to take it first, Kevin or Ron?
I'll take it first. I'm just going to suggest, this is an item that, I've got it up here, this is an item that is related to no parking on West 58th Street, and it seems to me it's connected to an agenda item we have later in the agenda. So, my suggestion would be, it's not.
I can speak to it now, or you can finish your question. So, we, the council approved the vehicle lanes, that's not changing. That's, the only thing up for discussion tonight is sidewalks. So, it really wouldn't change this. We need this for our state aid approval, so we would...
So, has there been, at one point in the conversation, there was a discussion about parking bays on 58th. Has that been taken out of the project?
It wasn't approved at the public hearing, and we didn't have anybody reach out for that, except for one individual, and we looked into that request, but it was right at the park entrance, and we felt it created actually a less safe environment for the pedestrians trying to cross right there at Philbrook, so we don't recommend it. So, our current proposal is no parking the whole length of the facility. And what we decided tonight was sidewalks won't affect that.
Well, I don't care how we deal with it, it just seems premature to do this before we've made the decision on that, and I, my recommendation was going to be to have them both at the same time, but we can...
And that's fine, too.
Yeah. I was just going to suggest...
As a discussion point, I think that they're tied together, it seems reasonable to group them, yes.
So, we may ask you then to take two actions on it.
That's fine.
We'll do it at that time during the conversation.
So, if we could just adjust the agenda to move this agenda item down to 7A, which would be next, I guess, so...
All right. Okay, very good. Then, we will move to reports and recommendations, the first one of which is West 58th Street.
Did they?
Do you want a motion?
Do we have a vote?
No, we didn't.
On what?
On the consent.
Do you want a motion to adjust the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, to adjust the agenda?
So, I would move that we move item 6D to 7A.
Second.
Okay, so we are adding 6D as an item under 7A. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can proceed. So, the first thing we'll talk about with regard to West 58th Street is the sidewalk feedback.
Speaker, members of the council, please recall at the December 9th public hearing, we reviewed this project from a utility and transportation and sidewalk standpoint. We heard testimony from seven residents, seven property owners. The council did close that public hearing and approved the sidewalk, approved the project with everything except for sidewalks. So, they asked, you guys asked at the time to go out for some more feedback on the sidewalk question. So, that, that hearing that night, the residents proposed an alternative sidewalk configuration, and that's what you're seeing here. So, they proposed a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot boulevard on the north, which was what was part of the city council-approved option from July, but then they recommended, the residents did, to have that same facility, a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot boulevard on the south side. So, that was the alternative, the additional feedback that we conducted on the Better Together website. We looked at that staff recommendation of that alternative A that we had considered in July, because we had discussion on that. We considered, the feedback, also considered the July 16th city council-approved option. We looked at that resident suggestion from December 9th, and then we looked at alternative D, which was just a flip of A, because I had up to about 20 individual meetings, and no one really had a concern with that wider facility on the south side. So, I thought we'd have some, get some feedback on that potential option. So, I wanted to remind the council of all the engagement we had done prior to that July 16th meeting. We had lots of individual meetings, lots of surveys, we had a very robust engagement process, using Better Together Edina, individual meetings, and then we, at that July 16th meeting, we did approve the section you see on the bottom right there. So, that's what the five-foot sidewalk and two-foot boulevard on the north, and then that eight-foot wide concrete walk on the south. So, that was the approved section following that July 16th city council meeting, where we considered all the engagement that we had collected prior to that meeting, and then also some individual meetings that the council members had conducted with those residents. Also on your agenda tonight is advisory communication from the Transportation Commission. The ETC supports continuing with that July 16th city council-approved option, so you'll see that in communications, part of the agenda later tonight, but I wanted to make you aware of that. So, staff recommends and also agrees with the ETC that we should continue this project with that approved option for these following reasons. We have ETC support, we want to honor that engagement promise that we did from the past feedback, all that feedback we solicited before that July 16th meeting. It does meet our pedestrian and bicycle master plan, in addition to the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan, from which the Twin Loops facility is derived. And since that July meeting, we've been doing a lot of staff design of this project, so I prefer not to waste all the effort we've done up to this point with the different sections. So, I would recommend we continue with that approved option from the July 16th meeting, and I'll stand for any questions at this time.
All right. Any questions for Director Milner? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Director Milner, in the last several days, we received a, some information from a resident relative to the Wisconsin standards, side path or bicycle paths running together with the walkway. And, and part of their evaluation was a concern about cars going in and out driveways, how that affects the biking and walking traffic. And I just, I know that you've seen, everyone in our council has taken a look at those as well. Some of those points, I believe, are valid. At the same time, I recognize that on 58th, there's, there will be no perfect solution. It's difficult to figure this all out. What we know is, we need bike access, and especially to panel a park. It's been clear, I think, that it probably should be kept on one side of the street, so merging from, say, a side street or something, just to avoid some traffic into the overall bike path, probably not workable, even though some people may still choose to access that. In the end, I, I think we, on July 16th, I thought that we had a pretty good arrangement after a lot of feedback from residents, and I felt comfortable coming away from it that night. And then, of course, our meeting occurred on December 9th, and we had, I think, a different group with different concerns come forward. At that point in time, we extended the evaluation time, and your point here tonight is, let's get forward with this, because we need to complete this, and our design work has been done. But I wonder if you would comment, at least briefly, on the, on the information that was sent relative to the Wisconsin guidelines, and tell me how that was considered, and then why we decide that it's okay in our process. I think people will, will want to know that.
Yeah, the guiding documents that were submitted to the council talks about conflicts, specifically driveways coming out on a shared-use path, or a sidewalk, or anything that kind of has a bike facility. And I would say you use these facilities around the metro area, there's conflicts everywhere. You're crossing driveways in many of those applications. I look at, what are we designing, who are we designing this for, and it's more the families and the kids and the users. Where would we rather have those conflicts, on a shared-use path or out in the street with a bike lane? And my personal preference is get them out of the street to take that 3,000 to 4,000 cars that are on 58th, get rid of that whole conflict situation. Now, we're just limited to the few driveways, and yes, we're going to have those. The people that live there know, after this is built, that there's, they have to probably pay attention a little bit better of the shared use, who's on there, but they would have to if we had bike facilities in the streets. Now, instead of looking for both shared-use users and vehicles traveling, they're only have to consider one first, make sure the shared-use path is clear, or the sidewalk, and then as they continue to back up, then they'd consider the vehicles in kind of a second operation. So, I think we just want to build out that bigger vision of connecting the community, connecting our parks through that Twin Loops idea, and this is our opportunity to do it. And we don't have that many opportunities to do it, so let's take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Member Staunton.
With respect to this parking issue, you did a little bit of explaining about, we had considered a parking, some parking along 58th. I know some of the neighbors, especially on the north side of the street, expressed concern about guests coming, and how they're going to have to park on those side streets if they're not able to park on 58th. And you've explained why it makes sense not to have parking on 58th. What are we doing in terms of crosswalks? Can you remind me again, in terms of formal crosswalks, for people who might park on those side streets to the south and want to get to the north, middle of the block, or somewhere along the way, between really, Wooddale and France is really what we're talking, Wooddale and the park probably is the most prominent.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a crossing at Wooddale, and there's a crossing, we're putting a flashing beacon with a new streetlight at the Philbrook Park entrance, so there'll be a defined crosswalk there. What we said is, let's build the facility and see how many users we have making crossings at those other facilities, and if it triggers enough crossings, if it, if it warrants it based on our current crosswalk policy, then we could come back and stripe those crosswalks later. Because we only want to put them in where they're actually being used, so...
Sure.
Let's put the facility in, see how many of those crossings we actually have occurring, because many of the people that live with Philbrook on the back have access from Philbrook. They have a lot of gates and fences through the back, that they can park back there and have guests, enter their property from the backside, too, so...
And so, there's nothing about how we build out the facility that would prohibit us in the future from creating crosswalks? Probably at those intersections, because we wouldn't want to do them mid-block, but...
Correct. Nothing's prohibiting us to put crosswalks in in the future.
And then, I want to renew my ongoing request that we consider 25 mile an hour speed limits, and this seems like it'd be a street that it would be good on, so...
The state aid standards has not addressed the change in the statute yet.
Neither have we, so we're together on that.
So, local roads, we can do that. State aid, what's that? What was that?
I said neither have we.
Yeah, it's on our work plan for this year to come back for work session in the fall.
All right.
We're waiting to see what Minneapolis and St. Paul do with their speed limits, because there's a couple of different ways they could do it. We want to see what they do first, because if the agencies kind of follow suit, then it's much easier from an enforcement standpoint, signing and striping and all that kind of stuff.
All right, well, my job will be to continue to be the squeaky wheel.
Yep. We'll be back later this year with more on that.
All right, thank you.
All right. No further, member Fisher?
No questions, I have some comments eventually.
Okay. All right, then. Hearing no more, then I'll ask for a motion to reaffirm the July 16, 2019, council approve option for West 58th Street roadway reconstruction project.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Member Fisher?
My perspective is that we went through this at length in July. I think we came up with a solution that generally people supported. What's very clear, I think, Councilmember Anderson really, very clearly articulated the issue, that we're never going to get the perfect. This is just a really difficult street, especially as it relates to bicycle movements, and we all talked about all those reasons. And I think, you know, working together, we came up with a solution, and, and not everyone's going to be happy with it. And I think one thing we've done is, I think we've done a very good job of pulling the neighbors and talking to the neighbors, but I think through that whole process, we can't forget that this is a facility for our community. And then, and we want to minimize the negative impacts to the immediate neighbors, but we really have to think about what's the best solution on this street for our entire community, and for the people that are moving back and forth. So, I think our, I'm appreciative of our Transportation Commission for their advisory letter that they put in our packet tonight, and I think they reminded us that this is the best solution that we have in front of us, and we should stick with it.
Other comments? Member Anderson.
A comment is almost a question. It just occurred. The crosswalk at 58th and Philbrook. Tell me again what our, our design plans are right there.
Yep, there'll be the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so you've seen those where they're push-button activated with white crosswalk blocks going across. Recall that the road is going to be 20 feet wide, so we're taking almost 10 feet off the road, so a much shorter distance for pedestrians to get across. And then, we're putting a new decorative streetlight there, taking that Cobra head down. So, there was, if you recall, a request to put automated flashers. Typical cost for a push-button is $6,000. We've gotten estimates for doing like a camera-activated, people just walk up and it starts flashing, that's $24,000. So, at this point, we're not recommending that, just from a budgetary standpoint, but anything we put in won't preclude us from doing that in the future if we see the need, or if we see that technology costs come down over time. Nobody in Minnesota has it yet. We've reached out to one county that may have it, and they haven't responded to our requests for information.
Okay, good.
So, so what would go there is the push-button?
Correct.
Okay. Member Staunton.
So, as I think back on the arc of all of this, and I want to echo Councilmember Fisher's comments about, you know, the enormous amount of effort we've put into gauging public input on this, and, and out of that, it seems to me there's a few things that people were talking about. One was safety along that street, trying to reduce the speeds and make it easier to cross and to walk along. And another was that the sidewalks be concrete instead of batuminous. And at the same time, we've got this, you know, a global bike path plan that calls for a bike facility in this area, too. So, part of what you were tasked with was trying, how do you design all those pieces and make it all work in a way that makes everybody happy? And to add on to that, folks pretty uniformly said they wanted as little of the right-of-way to be used as possible. So, that, so, so with that wide latitude, you worked on your design. And one of the things that I think about, when I think about this, is, is in our position, we don't really get to do the design. You know, it's not our job to sit up here and figure out what's the right design. I had suggested, for instance, of why wouldn't we do bike paths in the street with a separating curb? You know, staff responded that, well, we haven't done any plowing of that narrow six, eight-foot-wide pathway, how would we do the plowing, et cetera? I think you could also make an argument that if you're looking for safety, you would create, you would use more of the right-of-way, and you'd create a bigger boulevard so that you could have trees in the path between the sidewalk and the street, because that signals more to drivers to slow down than it's more of a residential neighborhood. But, you know, obviously, there's competing interests here. So, to me, I think that July 16th is the best compromise among all of those, and one of my worries with the kind of later-in-the-game suggestions is it takes the bike path out of it, and I think that's a non-starter. I think we've committed to that in the strategic plan, and in our bike plan, and in the Twin Loops. And so, that is a baseline expectation, and if we're going to include that, at a minimum, it has to be this eight-foot-wide path, and even with the compromise of making it concrete, I think it is acceptable in this situation, as you talked about, Director Milner, where we've got, you know, the users are not likely to be the users who would be annoyed by the click, click, click of sidewalk panels. Those folks will probably figure out how to go out in the street and ride with the cars. So, having said all that, I think I'm supportive of the July 16th solution. I think it's the best compromise among all those competing interests, and it's not our job to design the street up here, it's our job to try and steer it to a conclusion, and I think that's the best conclusion here. So, I'll vote in favor.
Anyone else? All right. Well, you know, I mean, we could continue to retool our comments, like, for weeks, but we have a project that needs to get out to bid, and we, the work we did to get up to Ju, July 16th, and the work that we did up on the dais that night to take a design and do a little design, because we did, actually. I, you know, I, I think it has what it needs to have. It has a facility for people who want to bike and walk in the same place, really, on both sides of the street. So, one is on the same side of the street as the park, and the other is on the, and on the opposite side, obviously, which is the smaller facility. When we were talking about conflicts, as I, as my husband and I ride these different trails, the regional trails, some of them, like, the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail is primarily off-road. is primarily off-road, so you're not concerned about conflicts. But when you ride the Dakota Rail Trail, a good part of that is going across driveway to driveway to driveway to driveway. And so I think it's just inherent in a project that it's, at least part of it, is probably going to share space with the right-of-way of a street. So I'm excited about this project. I'm excited that it incorporates the dreams and goals of the Grand Rounds in our city with the twin loops. Until that's built, people can't use it. But once it is built, I just think it is going to be the coolest thing. And go from park to park in our city, go beyond our city, and it's another way for people to get into and through Edina. So I will support the July 16 option as well. So we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Acting Mayor Brindo, please recall, we also need a motion on that resolution.
Oh, yes. Thank you. So we have a motion from Consent Agenda Item D. Adopt Resolution 2020-13, Approving Parking Restrictions on West 58th Street from Wooddale to Xerxes Avenue South. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Member Anderson?
Thank you. Just to recap a couple items on this, at the 12/9 meeting on the 58th Street project, no parking was mentioned as a concern. But during larger engagement, the vehicle speeds and volume were cited as a higher priority. So I think it's important for people to know, the 58th Street is an MSA street, so that's Minnesota State Aid Funding eligible. That means that it's a road that carries heavier traffic volumes and provides a coordinated road system. State funding on this project is roughly $2.4 million, which limits the homeowner assessment to only $9,900 per unit. That's approximately half the cost of the improvement, so a pretty good bargain for those adjacent homeowners. To gain that funding, Minnesota Department of Transportation has design guidelines, and so weighed on balance and traffic safety, it takes us down the path of no parking. The concerns that were mentioned on the 9th are valid concerns, because it's going to be an imposition on people visiting those homeowners. It just will. If you can't park in the street, and if the driveways are impacted in some way, there's going to be less parking in driveways. And that's very valid, and yet, just as the prior vote indicates, it's the best that we can do in this setting. If there was a way to create a parking bay, and that made sense, that could be done. I don't know what the solution will be ultimately, but I think that we've arrived at a place where this is the best that we can do, so I can support Resolution 2020-13.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. So you have what you need to move forward?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you. And we will look at crosswalks as we go here. All right, then. Item 7B in Reports and Resolutions is Ordinance, Ordinance Number 2020-02. All right. Amending Chapter 4 concerning alcoholic beverages. This is something that came to us from the folks at Wooden Hill Brewing, and it has to do with a consumption and display permit. Manager Neil, are you opening this one?
I am. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
Council's consideration tonight of Ordinance 2020-02 will amend Chapter 4 of our city code, and it provides for the council to issue a, something called a consumption and display permit. At our last meeting, the city attorney gave you a brief explanation about what a consumption and display permit is, as the acting mayor offered. This came to us from a local vendor who wishes to expand the scope of their operations at Wooden Hill and include events that they're not able to do, they're not able to serve right now because of current liquor license requirements at the state level. If we had the consumption and display permit, they would be able to host these events. The ordinance form that is in front of you tonight is one that was prepared by the city attorney. The city clerk and I met with Wooden Hill Brewing reps and went through the ordinance with them directly. They supported the form that's in front of you tonight. The form that is in front of you tonight allows the council to issue a consumption and display permit for a year or for a day for just a single event. But most importantly, it allows the city to attach conditions to the issuance of the permit, which was our concern initially about how these permits work, because we just don't have any experience with them. And again, as we talked about that with Wooden Hill, they were supportive of that as well.
All right. So how it came to us is, one of the owners of Wooden Hill expressed the desire to expand their business and be able to host private events, and such as a wedding reception. And if the wedding party wants a champagne toast, you can't get champagne at Wooden Hill. And so this would allow the wedding party to bring in their own champagne. So that's what a consumption and display permit is. It allows them to, the guests, to bring in their own intoxicating beverage. So in another instance, maybe there's a meeting or a party, and they want to serve wine, and so the guests would be allowed then to bring in their, the wine of their choice. So, any questions? Any comments on this one? If not, I'll take a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2020-02, amending Chapter 4 concerning alcoholic beverages.
So move.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I would just note that you're acting on first reading of this tonight.
Oh, yes.
And if you adopt it, we will advertise it per state statute. I think 10, we have a 10-day requirement. We'd bring it back to you at your next council meeting for, or the council meeting following that, for final action.
That's right. Typically, when we, when we update ordinances or amend ordinances, it's on a first-reading, second-reading basis. So this is first reading. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And then, Item 7C is Resolution 2020-15, Infrastructure Funding with Local Option Sales Tax. Let me get there. Here we are. And, Manager Neil, you're up again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we're asking the city council to adopt Resolution 2020-15. This resolution, if adopted, will be your, furthering your initiative to bring a local option sales tax referendum to the people of Edina. We are following a new state statute, relatively new state statute, which starts with this sort of action at the local level. Then this, this action, if approved, will go on to the state legislature. We have to have this into the hands of the chairs of the House and Senate Tax Committee by January 31st. So tonight is your, essentially, your last night as a council to take this action, if you wish to possibly have a referendum later this year. What we are proposing to you, and, okay, let me finish that thought. If this does go to the state legislature, and the, and both houses of the legislature approve our having, being able to have a local referendum, then goes to the governor. If the governor signs that bill, it comes back to our city, and then the council can decide when that referendum is going to take place within some, within some certain parameters of local elections. We have to, as part of this initiative, we have to propose a package of projects that would be financed with this new revenue stream that are locally significant, locally and regionally significant. So the back package of projects that we are proposing to you, and that we discussed at length in tonight's work session prior to tonight's meeting, is a Fred Richards master, is completing the Fred Richards Master Plan, building out the Fred Richards Master Plan, which is estimated to cost $17.7 million. Building out the Braemar Park Master Plan and Ice Arena improvements at $20.9 million. Building Weber Woods and Park and Stormwater Facilities estimated at $2 million. And $39.2 million for MSA, so Minnesota, the Minnesota State Street Construction Program, $39.2 million. This is a half-cent, this is proposed at a half-cent local option sales tax based on a 20-year collection period, which is estimated to be approximately $4 million a year annually. These monies would be collected by the city and spent on these projects. Going forward, the projects would be submitted as part of a referendum ballot to the residents of the city. They would get to vote on them, and the ones that are approved are the ones that would be financed with this new revenue stream. It's worth noting that we did a, we did a feasibility study on this revenue stream with the State of Minnesota, the University of Minnesota Extension Office. They estimated that our local collections would be approximately $4 million a year, and approximately 60% of that would come from outside the community and 40% from residents who reside in the community. Edina does have a pretty significant retail sales base, and that contributes to that number being as high as it does. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. I will note that, following the discussion we had in our work session, the resolution was updated, and there's a printed copy. It's also in Nova's Agenda. The update has already been posted online as well. But you have a printed copy of the updated version of the, of the resolution. So any questions or comments for Manager Neil?
I would just want to make one clarifying point, and I think Manager Neil covered this pretty well, but just to take it one step further, that 60-40 split, where 60% potentially could be paid for by people outside our community, these are regional-type infrastructure that we're talking about. It's all, there's a nexus here. So it's not random. It's very, I was very impressed with the thoughtful manner that it came to us, that we've identified those infrastructure pieces that visitors use, you know, and are attracted to, and therefore, you could argue that the, where the money's coming from and where it's being spent is all kind of the right place. And assuming it gets through all these steps, we're going to have plenty of time later to talk to our community about that. But just so people understand that the thoughtfulness and the planning that went into getting it to this stage, I'm impressed with.
All right. Anybody else? I did notice in paper today, the city of St. Paul is working on local option sales tax as well. So, and there are a number of cities working on this same thing with the January 1st, 31st deadline with, at the legislature, to get our information into them. So, and we did spend some time, when was it, November or December, that we had meetings with business community?
Yeah.
October?
Yeah, in the fall.
And then did a mailing of over 3,000 letters to the business community, informing them that this is an opportunity, and that we have an opportunity to take a look at this and move forward with it. So our vote today sends, if this is approved, we're approving that our resolution be sent to the Minnesota Legislature.
That's correct.
And be included in the work that they do to determine the future of local option sales tax. All right. So we have, we have a motion and a second, right? Nope, not yet? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2020-15, supporting the authority to impose a local sales tax to fund special capital improvements, providing regional benefit, to establish the duration of the tax, and the revenue to be raised by the tax, and to authorize the city of Edina to issue bonds supported by the sales tax revenue?
So move. Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And that is it for reports and recommendations. We are ahead of schedule. I will have you know. All right. Thank you to staff for the work in gathering all of this and compiling all of this. Greatly appreciated, as they are getting on here.
They're not interested in the rest that we're doing.
I was talking about the recent, do we need the Transportation Commission to call this a point of discussion?
It's just a, no, not really.
It's important.
Yes. Yep.
All right. So correspondence of petitions. Anything? We have very little on the dais tonight. Anything? Okay.
I would just echo what Councilmember Fisher had said earlier about appreciating the Transportation Commission's weighing in on the 58th Street as well. That was helpful.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we received minutes of the Park and Rec Commission meeting of December 10th, and then we got advisory communication from the Transportation Commission, as you mentioned, regarding 58th Street. Let's see here. All right. So I can give a brief aviation noise. So at the last meeting, I mentioned that the Noise Oversight Committee was meeting on January 15th, and I was mistaken. I had it on my calendar for the 15th, and, but I forgot that they moved the meeting to January 29th. I also have it on my calendar for January 29th, but I just didn't take it off for the 15th. The meeting is, was scheduled later in the month because of the holiday season to allow them some extra time to get the packet ready. So the meeting for January will be on the 29th. I do apologize to anyone who got in their car and drove over there for that meeting, which did not occur on the 15th. So that's all I have for aviation. All right. Mayor and council comments. Let's start with Member Fisher.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Member Staunton?
Just one thing I wanted to share. We are, for the next couple of months, hosting a foreign exchange student through Rotary, a nice young man from India. And as we've been trying to think of things for him to do, that, their experience is in Edina, one of the things he has never done before is played golf. And so we took him over to the Golf Dome to get a lesson and do some practicing. And it is the first time since that has been rebuilt that I've been in that place. Holy cow, what a great facility.
Wow.
It is. And we were there on Monday, Martin Luther King Day. Cars were parked up and down the street. The parking lot was full. All 43 bays were jam-packed with people waiting. It's a terrific facility, and so anybody who's an avid golfer who wants to get some time in in the winter time, it's amazing, and they have some incredible teaching staff there as well. So I just wanted to mention that experience, and it's a great resource for the community.
And they've got, and I don't, I haven't seen it, and Perry Vetter was just here, but they've got Topgolf or Top Tracer, so you can...
Got this computerized technology that can show you where your ball is going, how far, what arc. It's just extraordinary.
That's great.
Great resource.
Well, what a fun experience for Anush?
Ayush.
Ayush. Okay. Wonderful. Well, thank you for hosting him. It's a great experience.
Happy to do it.
All right. Member Anderson?
Thank you. Actually, just a... Actually, just a, a question for Manager Neil. I'm wondering how our applications are going for the commission vacancies, and do we have a larger-than-average number, or? And MJ is not here tonight, I know.
I don't know. Clerk, no? I don't know either. This, we tend, we tend to get a real rush at the end, just like a lot of application periods, but we haven't gotten to that stage where we're talking about, should we leave it open longer? But I'll talk, I'll check in with them tomorrow and find out what we've got.
Interviews, I think, start in roughly a week.
Next week, yeah.
So I would just encourage anyone who's interested to still get their application in. It can be done online at our website, so if you are interested in participation, it's easy enough to do. I know several people who have done it very quickly online, and they're excited about their prospects, so.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Well, I think I just have one thing, and that is, last Friday, the Municipal Legislative Commission met in our region of Southwest Twin Cities for its annual get-together with legislators, and, and it was a great morning, hosted at a beautiful building, the Plymouth Creek Center. We must get one of those in Edina somewhere. We really must. And I noticed the next door to the Creek Center, I don't know if I just forgot there was a dome there, but it looked, I didn't remember there being a dome there.
It's been there a long time.
Oh, well, okay, I guess I'm there only once a year, but...
But it's a temporary dome, so it's up and it's down.
Oh, okay. But, but yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful place for a meeting or, or an event, and, but, and it was also a great event put on by Messer Lee and Kramer, and, and they are lobbyists who work on our behalf in a variety of ways to help us with changes to state statute and legislation that would benefit our city. So that's all I have. Managers' comments?
None for me tonight, thank you.
Ooh, excellent. Wow.
Contrary to popular belief, it's not me who keeps the meetings long. It's the mayor, apparently, who makes the meetings.
I think so. All right, well, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Nicely done, Mary.
Thank you.